Second, we'll do, we'll convene the meeting, roll call for attendance, please.
Erickson?
Here.
Whit?
Here.
Arnold?
Here.
McIntyre?
Here.
Here, we do have a quorum at this time, if you'd kindly rise for the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic which stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Are there any agenda deletions or corrections? Seeing none, the first item on our agenda today is the consent agenda, all items listed under the consent agenda will be enacted by one motion. First, we'll do our meeting, our minutes to approve, August twelfth, two thousand twenty-five work session. August twelfth, two thousand twenty-five special meeting closed. August nineteenth, two thousand twenty-five board meeting, August twenty-sixth, two thousand twenty-five special meeting. August twenty-sixth, two thousand twenty-five work session. B, approve payroll removal, Mary Claire Eicholtz, summer zoning intern effective eight-eight, two thousand twenty-five. C, approve payroll removal, Jack Eicholtz, summer zoning intern effective eight-twenty, twenty-two-five. D, approve new hire Emily Wyderholt, zoning administrative assistant effective August nineteenth, two thousand twenty-five. E, approve new hire Justin McCun, assistant to the county engineer, effective September fifteen, two thousand twenty-five. F, approve step increase Devon Armstrong, equipment operator one, secondary roads, effective September twenty-three, two thousand twenty-five. G, approve step increase Vance Onimus, equipment operator one, secondary roads, effective September twenty-three, two thousand twenty-five. H, approve five-day special class C retail alcohol license for Sips in Motion LLC at seven-nine-one-nine-G-seventy-six Highway, New Virginia. Do I have a motion on the consent agenda?
Motion to approve consent agenda.
Second.
We have a motion and a second, any discussion from the board? Rule call, please.
Erickson?
Aye.
Whit?
Aye.
Arnold?
Aye.
McIntyre?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you, motion carries. Number two is our claims, our claims this, uh, this meeting is for a total of four hundred twenty-six thousand, five hundred thirty-three dollars and ninety-seven cents. Do I have a motion to approve the claims?
Make a motion to approve the claims? Second.
A motion and a second, is there any discussion from the board? Seeing none, roll call, please.
Erickson?
Aye.
Whit?
Aye.
Arnold?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion carries. Number three is consider entrance variance application as submitted by Cruz Land and Livestock LLC for FE application one-nine-six-one with possible action. Yeah, come on up, sir. State your name and your address.
Chris Cruz. My address is one-two-three-eight Tuscany Drive, Southeast Altoona. This property is not addressed, it's on Two Hundredth Avenue.
So you're just wanting to widen the entrance there, right, or were you wanting to address?
I'm sorry.
Were you wanting to address that entrance, or you wanted to just?
Widen it.
Your application was to widen it.
Yeah.
Right, uh, I guess that was. I was just, I didn't know what I could or couldn't do at that time, so.
Well, the.
I mean, eventually, I, I, I'd like to make sure I have the ability to address both of the entrances eventually.
So the existing entrance has about half the site distance required for an address. It's been an existing field entrance for a long time, but we do not address or allow any alterations to entrances that don't meet ordinances. So, it says in our ordinance that existing field entrances are grandfathered in, but they are grandfathered in exactly how they are, they're not. We don't allow them to alter them, to address them, to build off of them. We don't allow anybody to build off things, that's something, but they have to get the address through us, so. That's why we denied it, so he's requesting.
So we just, we just purchased the property, it was advertised that upfront that both of the properties were approved to be built on, and they did forward me some email correspondence from planning and zoning with the previous owner that seems to confirm that, I just.
We have. I'll give you our point of view, then I'll step down because this is, for this one and the next one. When the old homeowner passed away, the executor or somebody with the estate was trying to do their homework and did a, we do a plan to purchase, uh, application, which is kind of different in that case because they already own the property and they said, hey, does this spot, the one south there work for an address? We went out and looked at it, we said no. It didn't meet the site distance, which this is actually the next one we're talking about, but I talked about both these entrances with him at the time. We said no. I went back out three or four different times, found a spot that worked and wrote on his application, said if you split the land differently, you can have an entrance a hundred and seventy-five feet south of the existing homestead to get back there. Never did hear anything back. They sent the same split into the zoning office. We typically get, see those through our office, through plat reviews, but that didn't come to our office for review for some reason. So, they were unaware that we told the executor that they wouldn't work. And I told him that this is existing one north of it, I said, you could split that off, but use that existing, because there's a homestead that's addressed. Existing address entrances are grandfathered in too, so you could share an existing entrance and technically be grandfathered in through our ordinance because you're not altering it. But that was the last we heard about it until he applied for entrances and we had one of those moments where it's like, well, we already said no to this, but now it's the owner and the person who sold the, the old homeowner apparently didn't disclose all that information that we said no, so. I don't approve anything that doesn't meet ordinances, I don't recommend approving things that are two hundred and fifty feet of site distance, that's dangerous, I always look at it as if my daughter were pulling out of this driveway, would I want them to pull over a blind hill and potentially get hit, but that's not my call, so. That's why it comes to you for that. You have any questions for me?
So this isn't going to be utilized as a farm entrance, you just need to widen the driveway to, to get a cattle trailer or something in there a little easier?
Well, in the immediate future, that's what I was looking at. But if we're gonna, I mean, we purchased this with the plan to be able to build out there, and so. Whatever I need to do to make sure, if I, that I can do that, I need to make sure that happens, I guess, you know, now or as soon as possible. Other, otherwise, there may be, you know, we may have to do something, take legal action or something to get out of buying the property if we can't build on it, so.
He was advertised as buildable, or you got information from our zoning that it was buildable?
Well, yeah, they, uh, it was advertised that way from the seller and their realtor. I didn't get any of this, the, the background until after. Um, once I, once the permit got denied, um, I called the, the listing agent and, uh, just kind of was like, hey, this feels like a really big deal, what's going on, and, um. Yeah, he, he kind of, then he forwarded me some of the correspondence from, from previously. So, yeah, so we're just kind of at the mercy of what, what you have.
Right, so the, the other field entrance, or the other entrance that's looked at today, correct? Would be to the south of that, on that, basically that little yellow strip across there, on the south side of that?
Yeah, the first one was the blue strip on the, on the top, and then the, the other, second one would be that yellow strip.
So this is what we got originally. And there's existing entrances down here, and that was what they wanted to split up. And I ended up coming out and saying, there's a spot right in here that works, you would just have to split it differently.
Mm-hmm.
Bit of label in, but that's not what happened, so.
But now that property is owned by somebody else, and that's not going to happen, correct?
Yeah, they simply bought the house and he bought the land that was around.
So where you have entrance for drive marked with the black stripe?
That's where they wanted it to begin with, and that's where we initially, I would say this doesn't work.
Okay.
That entrance is actually sacred, one north. So, if you guys are ever gonna lean towards approving one or the other, I would say, I would rather you just approve the one that works better than the other ones, and I'm just saying, they're both fine and sacred.
And then tee off it to a shared drive to the other lot?
I mean, that's, I don't know, or I don't even know if they technically build on those. Can they build on the smaller, are you planning on building in back forties, and can we do that at those orders?
We go in back forty, I think that's what we do, we said. We didn't, they have that building, we did two back four, two back forties, the separate entrances, that give them a house on one and a house on the other.
So we technically need the two driveways?
Right.
What, does it, does it meet the requirements for frontage? It doesn't look like it has much frontage there for, for building.
It's two hundred feet wide.
Oh, they're two hundred feet?
Yeah.
Wide, okay.
Our office won't approve anything that doesn't meet services, so it's what comes to the board. I will administratively approve something within twenty or thirty feet of five hundred, but I think either.
Would that site distance be reduced at all if, it looks like there's a lot of houses in there? Would it be reduced at all if there's a slower speed limit?
We don't change speed limits because people want to build houses. We have to do an actual, different speed studies and.
Okay.
Do things right, and it's just, it's not an acceptable reason to actually build a speed limit.
Well, I'm not saying for this specific en, uh, application, but there's a lot of houses on there, and if it's as bad of an area as you say.
You also have to look at, is it already being forced, um, on that road? It's not my favorite solution either, because that puts the liability on the person driving, or the people who are wanting to actually sell the land and develop it. When they know that it's not a safe driveway. I don't think driveway, dangerous driveway signs are affected either. The MTC, there's too many signs, it's actually a distraction, it gets you to not pay attention to them more than once, so.
What is the speed, speed limit on the road currently?
It's fifty-five unless otherwise.
Oh.
That's all gravel road by Abaco, it's fifty-five during the day and it's fifty at night.
Yeah.
Wow, that's really fast.
Yeah.
It's a deadened road, and I think most people are probably doing about twenty, twenty-five.
I wish my Abaco would drop it to forty-five.
Mm-hmm.
If we start, you know, down that road, we have to do lots of speed studies and those things, and enforce the two.
So your recommendation, Tim, because of the site, is to deny this request?
I, I don't ever recommend approving anything that meets site distance, but there's a lot of other factors you have to.
Sure.
That'll be my recommendation.
I guess when I was reading it in the packet, I kind of looked at it as the land and cattle company, they're wanting to access that back forty so they can get cattle trailers in there and whatnot, they just want to widen that access a few feet to to get in there easier. And that wouldn't be an everyday occurrence. I wouldn't be opposed to widening it for that use, but if we're talking about building houses and stuff back in there, that might be a different subject.
Any other board thoughts? My, I'll, I'll give you mine, my general thought on, after reviewing the packet and, and the presentations is that clearly the buyer didn't have quite the info on the buildability of those lots, and that's unfortunate. So I do, I don't, I don't like the, the north one. If the middle ground approach on this, which frequently makes everyone upset, might be to salvage a little bit, would be to have the southern one uh, grant the variance on the southern one and, and tee off some sort of a drive to hit both lots in the back. That, that I'd be more agreeable with, but if, if we're at two hundred and eighty-five feet and we need five hundred for site distance, I, I, I'm not interested in putting a, a buildable home site on that, that that doesn't comport with, um, our ordinances at all. But the second one, I'd be more agreeable to, to permit a, a variance, and then it'd take a lot of work. It'd take a, a shared driveway, but that would permit, you know, your actual plan of building on those lots back there, and it would be safer. I would be agreeable to that. I don't know where the board's at.
So, um, so when the, the seller, they had, uh, a water meter put, had put on the north entrance, that's the one that's used, that's the only one that you can use right now, the, the south area, they just pushed the trees out, but it's hard, uh, not very usable, um, probably looking at a very substantial expense to put a drive.
Oh, I, I, I'm, I'm not disagreeing with you, right? There's going to be a cost to it, but it, but if the, if the north one is, is not buildable, then it, it's because of site distance and the ordinance, like that's, that's an issue, I mean, that's an issue between you and the seller and whatever was disclosed, unless you've got something that says, hey, Warren County said, um, this thing's buildable, um, we're gonna permit a driveway. It can go here and we'll, we'll waive the, the ordinance on it.
There, there was, there is correspondence from planning and zoning that said both of these lots are buildable.
And, and that might be the case, sir, but buildable and having a driveway that connects to the buildable.
It did, I think it said two, two driveways in the.
And to, do you have that? I'd, I would, I would see it, because I, I also, I'm not, I'm not a fan of going back and changing the rule. If the county at some point in the past said, this works, then, then, um, I'll, I'll certainly listen to it.
Yeah, I might, you might need to give me a minute to, to find it.
You're fine.
Okay.
Take your time.
Yep.
Becky, do you have anything on this?
So I guess the only comment I have is this was done when Lindsay was here. And she had approved the lots for the Plata survey that was presented, I believe, after talking with Tim, that these are the outlots, and is that correct, Tim? That she didn't send it his way because it was regarding the outlots, not what was presented on the Plata survey, is that correct?
I, I think she, from what I saw, she approved the ten acre lot that they split the house off of, and didn't consider the remainder parcels. She approved the ten acres split, but didn't look at the whole property. It's why I think it didn't notice, but.
That's what it seemed like to us, so.
I look at it, I did worse for you, I had to. It plus the whole thing.
Mm-hmm.
Plus lots, because it's not really a smaller.
Right.
Internet doesn't work for some. I can't look anything up.
Well, I guess I'm, I'm not really ready at this point to approve, because it seems like there's a lot of pieces of this puzzle that are missing, I don't, we don't have the survey or the you know, subdivision, or any of the paperwork, or what was approved or not in the past, so. Don't know if it's something I've tabled, or just voted, but I'm not ready to approve it at this time.
I do, I would agree with tabling it, I. Oh, we found it. He found it.
Is that the seller's agent?
No, he's the previous property owner.
Okay.
Uh, it says, Randy reviewed the drawings, already the parcel options, just the home of ten acres and build two more homes on remaining parcels.
Does it say anything in there about a driveway?
Because technically, this would be a lane as well. And our ordinance doesn't allow lanes at the current time, right?
Not anymore.
If you share a driveway, you can access one of those options.
Yeah.
If you share a driveway, it's separate, right?
Yeah. Because it's only those two.
How about, how about this, sir, I'm not, I'm not trying to, to waste your time, or um, make a snap decision here, but what I, what I would like to do, and what I think the board wants to do on this, is to gather a bit more info on that, I, I will tell you, I'm not supportive of the driveway up top on the north side with the minimum site distance. Uh, absent you having, um, some correspondence from someone in Warren County that says that driveway is approved regardless of the site distance, which I, I doubt exists, but I'm, I'm willing to look at it if you have it. Um, and what I al, where I ultimately think this thing falls is that you know, would I be amenable to doing something that's not perfect on the site distance on the southern one and do a shared driveway to the two, to, to help get you out of the bind? Probably, probably. Um, but that's going to have some cost, because it sure looks to me like that, that looks like it's all trees, and who knows what the terrain looks like. But there might be a shared drive that, that could be a solution for you on those, on those lots back there. Um, that, I would have a lot more comfort doing, because two hundred and fifty feet is not a lot at fifty-five miles per hour. And there's a, there's a reason why our ordinance says what it says, so I, I'm not, I'm not saying that like I, I was involved in the negotiations, I don't know what was proposed to you from the seller or their agent. Um, but we do have to, to keep our zoning ordinance somewhat tight, otherwise they don't have any teeth. But, so there might be the solution. But I'd, I'd sure like to know a little bit more information about what Lindsay had said, and she hasn't been in the office for a bit. With some issues, so I, I'd like to, to put it on hold for the moment, and then come back to it in two weeks. Um, or at a work session. But I'm not trying to like, hey, I want to haul you back in here and, and burn your time, that's not my goal. I think that you generally, um, want a resolution here, and you, you bought some probably expensive ground with the purpose of building some lots. And I'm trying to help you find a solution to do that. But it's not going to be on the north one, I, I, I mean, our engineer seems pretty against that.
On that, uh, more fun, I was just saying, so you got, you have an entrance right here, like if we were all ahead on this end, or potentially a house.
There's just nothing I haven't found, I checked all set, responded. You only, what I told, I just told Randy, I told Randy Ferguson back when he was over a year and a half ago, I said, one would work here, and I said, if you wanted access, he asked about this, I said, that doesn't work. I said, you could split it off to where you could access it and then come on here and property and visit. Those are the solutions I gave him. I know it's not your fault, but it always frustrates me, when we do this labor and talk to people trying to sell it, and they just don't listen because they already had a split. If you would have split it right here and had an entrance, and then we'd reshape that to be ten acres, this means site distance is safe. And this one would actually be grandfathered in that house. That's what I would like to be done, but I also know that somebody might own that house, it would have been a lot easier if he owned all that property to do it, and so, but.
So there, so there's, there's solution number two, I'm not saying that's a, the winning ticket. But it, but if it were me, who were you, I would probably get in contact with that homeowner as well. I'm trying to offer like an olive branch on a solution on the southern one, it's going to be expensive, but it's a potential salvage. But the other, the other option would be to contact that homeowner and see what, if anything, they would, it would take to get a, a shared entrance off of the existing drive and then tee it back. They might do it, might cost some money too, I don't know. Um, or, or maybe they want to be super neighborly, I have no idea. But I, if it was me, I would explore both those options, but I'd, I'd like to ha, I'd like to table the south one for now.
I think they're interested in cattle trailers pulling them out of their driveway to their house either, so.
They might.
You're just wanting that, the field entrance, you can use the field entrance.
Yeah, you can use the field entrance for the cattle stuff.
Yeah, it's been, we can use that way, because we're talking to them to address it, to actually build it back.
Yeah.
That changed the use, because right now it's a, it's a field entrance, we're not saying you can't use the field entrance.
Correct.
We just don't like to alter things that don't exist.
Because it's not addressed. For a home.
Right.
Is the.
That, that's what they were going to talk about, like Travis said, if you wanted to widen, to use the field entrance, he probably approved that as a variance, but not knowing that you want to build a home back there.
Yeah, I mean, this was a life long dream for my wife and I, I've been trying to do for, you know, years and, uh, trying to purchase a piece of land and still be able to get a driveway or whatever, it's kind of, uh, tough to hear.
I get it. Um, so at this point, I would be interested in, in, oh, I'm, I'm not supportive of the north one from our engineer, but the south one, I'd, I'd be willing to revisit that in, in a work session. I'd be willing to revisit that in a board meeting in two weeks. But I, I do want to know, is there any documentation from the county, because that, I'm not, hear me when I say this, folks. There is a big difference between a purchaser thinking that they've got the ability to do something because some agent told them versus the county was agreeable to it, and then we changed the rules. Those, I'm going to just rubber stamp, absolutely go ahead and do it. Even, even if that draws some eye daggers and the ordinance people are upset and zoning doesn't like it, because if we are on the hook for saying, you can build here, you can, and, and you can put a driveway here regardless of what our ordinance says, and then we change that on people, that is patently unfair. And I'm not okay with it, because people are spending real money to buy a, a piece of ground to build their home or Bardo or Dream Place, whatever. And you can't change the rules after the fact, so if, if there's documentation that says yes, buildable lot, and yes, um, driveway acceptable, if you got that, I'll hear you out on the north one too. If not, then, then it's probably going to be that south entrance that you're still going to need a variance, and we can come back and, and, and look at that, I will be supportive of it. Um, to get a teed off, shared driveway to the back, it's gonna, it's not going to be a cheap endeavor, it looks like it's a bunch of trees, and I don't know if there's creeks, you don't want that, like. But I, but I, I'd like to try to offer something that would help, but, or the neighbor. And, and as I see it, those are probably the only realistic options, unless the county's on the hook saying yep, it's buildable, and yep, we're going to approve a driveway there too. If you've got that, then, then, even if our engineer says, I don't, I don't like it, well, that's my call then, and I'll, and I'll approve it. But absent that, it'll, it, I'm looking at the south one or a, a shared residential drive off of that teed existing one would be your two options as I see it, but I don't, I don't know what the board feels.
There's a solution here, we just got to put our heads together and figure it out. We can all work together and make, make something happen here, especially if the county, you know, zoning told them that there was buildable lots back there. We just need a little more information, so we can all be informed and make the right decision.
All right, I'll make a motion to table item number three and four at the present time.
Second.
Any discussion from the board? Does that, does everyone sort of, I, let me heat check the board, where, where are you at with that? On, on the south one, in the event that, that the neighbor's not interested in sharing the driveway, which they might not be. And I mean, honestly, that's a tough ask for someone too, like, if it was my driveway and I got a new neighbor and maybe I didn't want a new neighbor because I liked the.
They just bought this new place, they have been there.
Yeah, that, that, that might be an ask, I, I'm not saying that that's, uh, the easy button there, but. But on the south one, I, I and depending on what Lindsay said and email correspondence do, I want to look at, but I, I want to come back to this no later than two weeks. And it very well could be a, a work session next week too, but I want to get a little more information and, and try to help you find a solution, because I, I don't know what you paid, I could look it up, but my guess is, um, what is, how many acres are back there? Yeah, ninety-two acres in Warren County was not an inexpensive deal for you. Yeah, ninety-two acres in Warren County was not an inexpensive deal for you if your goal was to build and if you're relying upon, um, some, some correspondence from the county saying buildable and, and you're thinking things are going well and now all of a sudden you've got a, a pretty big monkey wrench in there. So I, I will try to work with you, I, I mean that, um, but.
And I don't, I don't know how well you know Tyler Stanley that owns that house. Um, him and his fiancee bought that house. I'm, I'm really good friends with Tyler and if you want, I'd be happy to meet with you out there and, and we can all chat and see if we can find a solution.
Yeah, I have been briefly, but I haven't had a, haven't had any.
He's a pretty good guy.
So perhaps there's a solution. I'm hopeful, but I, but I just, I need to know what the county said. So within the next two weeks, we will revisit this, sir. Okay, Mr. Cruz? All right, so we've got a motion, we've got a second, roll call please.
Erickson?
Aye.
Witt?
Aye.
Arnold?
Aye.
McIntyre?
Aye.
Aye, so we've tabled three and four. Number five on our agenda is consider appointment to the Warren County Veterans Affairs Commission to serve a position due to resignation with possible action. The remaining term expires six thirty, two thousand twenty-six. Good morning.
Good morning. So the commission met together and Josiah Segabart from the Army and Dave Titus with Marines and Iowa National Guard both interviewed for the position. We already have two Army people, so they all said that Dave Titus would be their recommendation since we want to keep it broad with amongst all the branches. Any other questions?
I'll make a motion to approve the appointment of Dave Titus to the Warren County Veterans Affairs Commission.
Second.
Any discussion from the board? I've got a comment for you. Um, I read with great pleasure Ms. Duncan's article about your Veterans Affairs Office and it was heartwarming and really a great article. And I enjoyed Supervisor McIntyre's comments at a prior meeting that sort of, uh, predated the, the article. But you're really doing a good job and I really appreciate that there are people that are stepping up to serve on this board because that is not always the case in all of our boards and commissions. Sometimes we are pulling teeth to get someone to actively participate and, and volunteer for these roles. Um, it looks like we, when you have a board gap, we get a bunch of really highly qualified military experienced people that are all raising their hands saying, I want to be a part of that because it's going well. So again, kudos to you and your office. Approving Mr. Titus will be a pleasure, so. Any other comments or discussion? Roll call please.
Erickson?
Aye.
Witt?
Aye.
Arnold?
Aye.
McIntyre?
Aye.
Aye, motion carries. Congratulations. Number six is consider Wonderon Buxton ARPA payout with possible action.
Um, this one is me. On July twenty-second, uh, we had Doug Bylin, Melissa Sones and Erica Roberts come to a work session where they presented signage that they would like to purchase, which falls in line with the Wonderon Buxton, um, ARPA dollars that are remaining. They will be purchasing a six foot logo sign as well as a custom shape with the three D graphics on it. So this does fall in line with what they have left on the, um, in their funds. And I got those invoices to Michaela and Megan. Any questions?
So we do have some questions. Do you want us to pay out the twenty thousand is what was awarded for ARPA? Or do you just want this invoice paid directly?
I would say just pay the invoice directly.
Okay.
And that is a total of fifteen thousand four hundred and fifty dollars. I'm not good with math, but that's leaving a little bit over forty-five hundred dollars left in the, in that fund.
Forty-five fifty.
Thanks, sir.
Okay. Was that a motion?
Um, I'll make a motion to approve the Indianola hometown pride. I'm sorry, let me pull up my agenda. Uh, consider, a motion to consider paying the Wonderon Buxton ARPA payout for fifteen thousand four hundred and fifty dollars.
I'll second it. Any discussion from the board? Roll call please.
Erickson?
I actually have a question real quick, I'm sorry. Dawn, I sit on the board, should I abstain from this vote? I sit on the, I'm, I'm on the Main Street board and Main Street's working with the Wonderon Buxton project. Thank you, I, I'm sorry, it just came to me way too late. Rather do it right, okay, so I'm gonna withdraw my motion.
Now I've seconded a non-existent motion.
And, and I'm not gonna say anything else, I'm gonna sit back.
Do we have a motion to approve the, uh, Wonderon Buxton ARPA payout in the amount of fifteen thousand four hundred and fifty dollars?
Send motion.
Nope, I'm looking for one. Do we have one? Can you make it?
Make that motion.
All right, Supervisor McIntyre makes the motion, I'll second the motion. Any other board discussion on the motion? Roll call please.
Witt?
Aye.
Arnold?
Aye.
McIntyre?
Aye.
Aye.
Sorry about that, everybody.
No, I think that's good.
Motion carries, four zero. All right, number seven is receive and file reports. We have one report from the Veterans Affairs. At this point, I'll make a motion to receive and file the Veterans Affairs report.
Second.
Discussion from the board. Roll call please.
Erickson?
Aye.
Witt?
Aye.
Arnold?
Aye.
McIntyre?
Aye.
Aye, the motion carries. Number eight is supervisor's report, would any of my colleagues like to share?
Eleven win since Friday.
Oh, gosh.
Friday.
I'm turning my.
Crystal, I'm gonna go first. Um, so congratulations to the Indianola Indians for, um, taking down the Norwalk Warriors. Twenty-eight to fourteen and, um, Dawn, because we don't bet money, we bet wearing hats. At the next meeting, Aaron will be wearing an Indianola hat because he loves Indianola football so much. So congratulations for another year, Warren County gets to brag, well, or until the next sport. They're really good at basketball though in Norwalk. Okay, that's all I had.
Anyone else?
I just want to go back to ARPA. I don't know of any other entity that shared their ARPA funds with the rest of their communities like we did with ours. Uh, I think it was a quarter or was it half of our ARPA funds went out to? I, I think it was just a little less than half. Um, if you include the, um, help that we gave to the cities. So, just want to point that out. Think it's worth noting. And we're doing very well financially, so.
Thank you Supervisor McIntyre, anyone else? Um, number nine is public input. Comments will be limited to three minutes per individual. The board's not gonna take any action on the comments due to the open meeting requirements, but may do so in the future and for your benefit, we frequently do. It's a good way to source information on what people are feeling, what people are thinking and, um, sometimes it puts things on our radar screen that might not otherwise be there. Um, so they are very valuable to us. Um, with that, is there anyone online or in the room that would like to make a public comment? Seeing none. Our next item is just setting the next meeting. That date will be set for September sixteen, two thousand twenty-five. That'll be at six P M. in the boardroom. Again, we hold those evening meetings for the benefit of the public. So when they are sparsely attended, uh, when no one logs in online or shows up to them, it, um, it, it very well might impact a future date where we set and when we set our meetings, so. Uh, next one will be six P M. September sixteen.
And Aaron will be wearing an Indianola hat. So everybody should come, Amy bring the good camera.
I might even wear an Indianola football T-shirt too, I don't, I don't know, we'll see.
Beat Norwalk shirt.
Oh, jeez. All right, with that, um, I'm looking for a motion to adjourn.
Make a motion to adjourn?
Second.
A motion, a second, roll call please.
Erickson?
Aye.
Aye.
Arnold?
Aye.
McIntyre?
Aye.
Aye, we are adjourned, thank you all for your time.